Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City Council meeting here this evening. First up on the agenda is roll call. Terrell?
Mayor Gill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dukes?
Here.
Councilmember Buckland?
Here.
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Starkey?
Here. If you'd please rise for the invocation given by Vice Mayor Dukes, followed by the pledge allegiance by Councilmember Buckland.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for your presence here tonight. We pray that you would give us wisdom and direction as we make decisions for our citizens and our city. We thank you for your guidance and pray your blessing on us here tonight. In your most holy name, we pray. Amen.
You salute the flag and pledge of name.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight, we're honoring two of our finest from City of Yuba City's Police Department. We have two proclamations. First one is to Marilyn Terry retiring from Police Record Supervisor, Yuba City Police Department. And then we've got Jisla Hamilton, 2014 Law Enforcement Volunteer of the Year. First of all, ask Marilyn to come up to the front here. Got two versions of this. This is a nice fancy one. A proclamation where we've got a lot of wherashes, a lot of accomplishments you've done, but I'm gonna go ahead and read the shorter version of it. If you want to hold on to this for just a second. I want to congratulate to Police Record Supervisor Marilyn Terry on her retirement from Yuba City Police Department. Marilyn began her career with Yuba City Police Department in 1990. She has held the position of Public Safety Dispatcher, Police Records Clerk, and most recently, Police Record Supervisor. She has received numerous letters of recognition and appreciation for efforts in serving her community in the past 24 years. Her consistent work ethic and dedication earned her recognition from the State of California Department of Justice for excellence in crime statistics reporting, criminal offender reporting compliance. And she earned the Chief's Employee of the Year Award in 2001. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Cash Gill, Mayor of Yuba City, or City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire council and citizens, we serve do hereby congratulate Police Record Supervisor Marilyn Terry on the occasion of your retirement from the Yuba City Police Department. Congratulations. Thank you so much for serving this wonderful community.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's the first time you've been sure on words. Okay, we've got two of the same short versions for Marilyn. Jisla, you wanna come on? Wanna come on up? Okay, so this is the 2014 Law Enforcement Volunteer of the Year, Northern California Police Department, Yuba City Police Department proclamation on behalf of the entire city council. I am gonna read some of these wherashes. It's for the simple fact, because I don't have a short version of it. Jisla Hamilton graduated from the Second Class of Yuba City Police Department, Citizens Academy in 1997, and subsequently was selected as a member of the volunteers in policing that same year. Whereas in her 17th year as volunteer, Jisla Hamilton has donated over 12,000 hours of her valuable time in service to our community. And was recognized on October 7th, 2014, by Law Enforcement Volunteers of California as a Northern California Volunteer of the Year. She was chosen from a pool of thousands of worthy volunteers. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Cash Gill, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire council and citizens we serve, do hereby congratulate volunteer Jisla Hamilton on her selection and honor her for years of service to the City of Yuba City. Yet on this 21st day of October 2014, City of Yuba City, County of Sutter, State of California, thank you so much for everything that you do for our community. The chief is here as well, and he has a presentation to make to you two as well. Chief?
Well, first of all, I wanted to congratulate Marilyn on her retirement in Jisla. Thank you so much for all you do. She was recognized from the entire state of Northern California. So awesome job. It's a big, big honor. There's only been four in the past, and she's the fourth one to receive the award. We wanted to give you this week garden gnome, because we know how much you like police officers and gnomes.
Yes, there's a game on. Three, three zero Giants. Carry on. Okay. Public Communications, you are welcome and encouraged to participate. Just went off to a different agenda here. Public Communication, you are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comments on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments and controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Item number three is written requests. Members of the public submitting written requests. At least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be normally allowed at five minutes to speak. Terrell, do we have any written requests?
No requests were received.
Okay. Item number four is appearance of interest of citizens. Members of the public may address the city council items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. I believe, Mr. Bush, we have an interested citizen who wishes to come and speak, and so you can go to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name's Eric Prothero. I live in Conley Avenue with 770. And I've been born and raised in the same town that we live in now. The third generation of the house that the city had undertaken as a renovation, beautification, if you ask me. The only thing that I can recommend is that, I can say is that I can honestly stand back, and I've always been a blue collar ditch digger, and I look back and I see who is manning the shovel. And those who are manning the shovel, I tell you, I give respect to, and I try to work with. Those that are in the backfield, they're still in the backfield, if not buried by the guy with the shovel. But the problem, the thing that I see is that there's an organization that is well beyond comprehension. They have the ability, the talent, the means, the caring and the heart to look at the city of what it is. They're no longer behind the desk, behind the glass. They're, this is the first time I've been up here, so pardon me if I seem near as I rattle on, but I've been fishing this in my head since I left, come here today. The work that these people had undertaken, I can only compare to a beach Marine Corps landing. And there's always somebody in charge. Now, I don't know who all was in charge, but I do know the people that I had met. And the people, I don't know their last name. One lady's name is Katrina. Aaron himself, I don't know his last name. The other one is Bonnie. Well, now, these folks came, they lined out, they set out, and they undertook the challenge of a house, my house, particularly that was built in '22. I come from a generation that if it leaks, times are rough, find where it leaks and patch it. Well, with that being in mind, their eyes got as big as hubcaps when they come in, they walked on the property and said, oh my goodness. Well, it doesn't look the same now. The street doesn't look the same. Everybody has a bitter attitude. Everybody talks to people, and they know people. I actually, after 60 years, I know my second neighbor. Prior to that, I didn't want to. Well, we all have this bond together. But long story short, is that Aaron and Katrina, now Katrina, I understand is in charge, was in charge of this operation, this undertaking, this beach landing. She advised, she directed, she lined out, everything to be done. It ran like a hot knife through butter. I take my hat off to Aaron and the other staff members that were there overseeing, and not only just overseeing, but picking the shovel up and out, doing everything they can do besides trying to control 100 or better teenagers, which is a chore in itself. The staff that had worked there, I'm standing back and I'm looking and saying, now, this is what the city is about. It's not about streets and people and cops and police and courts and everything else. It's about the city elected members caring enough for the city and the people and their housing to come out and participate. Now, I don't know if this, I know, I understand this happens once a year, but I would love to see everybody, all council members, everybody that got voted, because politicians take a hit. They take a hit, everybody says what they're gonna do, and when the bottom line is done, smoke clears, nothing is being done. My recommendation is that all members that are voted in, take charge and be accounted, and go out amongst the public, much like Aaron and Katrina and Bonnie and all the other staff members did. Now, they did what they could do. Now, not everybody jumps fences. I go through gates now, I get on the other side. But the point is, I still get, I still moving. And it does my heart good to see city politicians, city elected officials out doing their job. And if they're not voted in, then I take my hat off to the administration that did elect them. Because without these folks, and there are other members and that I'm overlooking, please forgive me, but these are the ones that I dealt with personally. They need to be recommended. Whoever hired these people, whoever elected these people, put them in the position that they're in. It was one of the sides marrying who they married, because my wife is, the only dumbest mistake she ever made was married me. And the only thing I smart did, I married her. So in council, they need to pat them on the back. Say, great job, well done. This is not, I know, I'll make it short. But Katrina was in charge of the whole operation. Bonnie came back on a day off, on a Sunday, at 6 o'clock and didn't leave my house until 8:30 that night on her own time. Now, there's no words that express, when you're looking out there and you see somebody out there working near your yard that doesn't have to be there, that is actually breaking their hump and doing their job and beautifying it, and care enough to come back when they're not supposed to. That is amazing. And I take my hat off to you and to all the other staff members, and especially to Katrina and to Bonnie. They did a remarkable job, fantastic job. And to be honest with you, if they ran for public office, I'd vote for them. They got my vote hands down. And nothing against the present, but like I said, my recommendation is that come forward and be involved more than just the administration part. Come forward and go out there and do what you can do, and put yourself out in the public and say, I voted for this guy. There he is. And it's not just someone that is a picture on the poster out in the street. But I thank you for your time. I appreciate your patience and more people need to come and comment and congratulate about the hard effort that everybody is doing in this city that is not noted, may not be seen. So I thank you very much, and I'll get out of your hair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is better word, item number five, purchase of crane truck FB1503. I believe Mr. Spencer Morrison?
Sorry, I'm still enjoying the last comments there. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, I bring before you the award recommendation for the purchase of a 33,000 pound gross vehicle weight rating crane service truck. And there's an example photo there. So the uses of a crane service truck will include daily use primarily by the Water Distribution Division for lifting tapping machines and new valves, removing and placing steel traffic plates, fire hydrants and check valves. It will carry a large compressor to run pneumatic tools. May be used by other divisions to replace streetlight poles, lift station pump maintenance, and placing concrete benches and signs. This truck is an essential tool to the public works maintenance teams. We sent the bids out to four known vendors. We had three responses. Of those responses, the actual lowest bid at the time of opening was Cobalt Truck Equipment out of Nampa, Idaho. But they, while it appears that they were the low bidder, they did not include sales tax. And we do have to pay sales tax on this vehicle. And so that adds an extra $11,000 that we would have to self-assess on what we call a use tax to the state of California. So that made the actual low bidder, Lowdy Truck and Equipment out of West Sacramento, California, for $144,963. Staff's recommendation is to award the purchase of one crane service truck to Lowdy Truck and Equipment of West Sacramento, California, in the amount of $144,963.75 by finding it is in the best interest of the city to do so. Are there any questions?
Questions for Spencer?
No, I'd like to accept the recommendation and move. We approve it.
Second that. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Spencer. Consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time council votes on the motionless members of city council, staff or public request items to be discussed or removed under consent calendar for individual action. Item number eight is being polled at this point in time. We brought in a later date.
Mr. Mayor, my apology if I misspoke on that. Actually, I asked you to pull it just for separate consideration off the consent calendar.
Okay. Sorry about that. So we will have that as a separate item. So we have items number six, seven.
I'll move for approval of the consent calendar.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Carries, thank you. Item number eight.
Natalie? Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, I wanted to bring forward you the Police Association and Sergeants' Agreements again. If you remember, at the September 16th city council meeting, the POA and Sergeant's Employment Agreements were approved. After city council approved these agreements, it was discovered there was a technical issue with the overtime language, which has since been resolved. Both the police officers associations and sergeants bargaining units have signed these current contracts with the updated overtime language. And at this time, I would ask you that I'll take any questions and ask that you move forward with approval.
Questions for Natalie?
No questions. I'd move, do we approve?
Okay, got a motion?
Second that.
Second, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wonderful, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine, general items, expansion of the city's sphere of influence, SOI, southern boundary line from new development opportunities. Mr. Bush?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This item is a familiar project for the city council. It started back in October of 2013 when we conducted a joint workshop with the city council and the Sutter County Board of Supervisors, where we discussed a variety of different things, including the possible expansion of the city's sphere of influence in south of our current city limits. It was, the purpose of that discussion was an opportunity to create new job opportunities, new economic growth for both Yuba City and for Sutter County. And at that particular meeting, both a group of elected officials endorsed the idea and directed our city and county staffs to work together towards the next steps in that effort. This right here is just a quick map of our current city limits. It's shown in red, and the green line represents our existing sphere of influence boundary line. Not showing up, but... This right here is the Sutter County General Plan map that was presented to the special workshop. As you can see, this line in red right here represents a line in their general plan that shows the possible expansion of our sphere of influence. And that was something that they included as kind of a first step effort towards new economic growth opportunities for Yuba City and Sutter County. So this is what we were working off of, was this particular map here and the decision of how far to go possibly expand our sphere line. This is just a blow up detail of that along with the county zoning. Thank yous shown underneath. Well, shortly after that meeting in October of last year, the city received a development proposal from the Newcombe Ranch Partnership Group south of the city's current city limits and sphere of influence. They actually proposed to expand the boundary for approximately 210 acres. And that project would include a variety of different components to it. While acreage is not one of the biggest projects we've worked on, it is certainly one of the most involved in terms of all the different types of entitlements and processes that we'd have to go through, which would include a boundary adjustment to the sphere of influence, pre-annexation, zoning and land use, LAFCO processing, master plan, environmental review, development agreement, and then also other steps involved with the county in terms of the master tax exchange agreement. Just as a reminder for the council, this is the new property here south of Bow Road and there east of Highway 99. That brown portion is held by Newcombe Ranch LLC. That is other property owners that are interested in participating in the plan and the proposal. And then this area is the original proposal for the master plan area that the developer would propose as part of this effort. Now, real quickly on this particular map, as you can see, the area in red is the boundary that was established in the county's general plan for the possible expansion. And whether we choose to pursue an annexation of just the brown, blue, or green, or all of them, or anything else outside of that, the processes remain the same in terms of going through the technical reviews for expanding our sphere, doing a municipal services review and et cetera. And so we asked the council, when we presented this proposal to the council in March 18th of this year, we asked the council for direction to go forward and talk to all the property owners out there in that area to find out what their feeling was and whether or not they would like to be part of a expansion to the sphere of influence or not. So we solicited the help of MMS Strategies, who's here tonight to help us with that effort. They have a lot of experience working with people and those kinds of projects. And our effort was concluded in a workshop on August 11th, where we were meeting at Berry School, elementary school. We had over 100 attendees, so it was very well attended and lots of good dialogue and discussion. That outreach effort also included a public vote, if you will, at the meeting. And I'll get into the results of that in just a moment. And then we followed up with every property owner. So we sent a variety of different correspondents, people that were at the workshop, people that weren't at the workshop, people that were not able to attend. So we can get as much results as we possibly could. And we got pretty good feedback, I think. Because of all the people that were there, we got 83 property owners of the 100-plus. We, so we got about 44% response, including based on the number of property owners as well as the acreage represented there. Of those 81 property owners that provided responses, 41 of them representing 467 acres supported an expansion of the sphere of influence. 35 representing 104 acres did not support it. And then finally, seven property owners were undecided. This exhibit is in the report that MMS prepared for the council, which has been included in your packet. The green color, and hopefully you can see this okay, and I have a copy back here as well for clarity's sake. The green colors represent property owners that were interested in the sphere of influence expansion. The red represents property owners that were not interested. And then the yellow finally represents properties that were undecided. Now, at that meeting, we took a lot of questions and we tried to give as much feedback as we could. And we had talked about the possibility coming back for a second meeting. But based on the strong feedback and the recommendations, we felt that we're coming to you tonight with a recommendation to draw the sphere of influence line at Stewart Road based on this. And as you can see, if you draw the line at this point here, overwhelmingly, majority is in favor of that annexation. So what we're proposing for you tonight is just the consideration for us to go forward. As I mentioned, the first step in this process was the county including their, in their general plan, the possible boundary limit for the expansion. And so tonight, what we're asking you is to give us direction or authorization to move forward so that we can start processing all those other technical documents. This right here represents the proposed recommended line. So here's Highway 99. Here's Bow Road. And what we're suggesting, based on the property owner feedback, is that the sphere of influence boundary be proposed along Stewart Road at this point here. So, next steps, we have a lot of them. And we've been talking with a lot of different folks about getting this project underway. The next steps will be, is after your action tonight, we'll be finalizing the selection of a project consultant. We're currently evaluating those proposals. We've invited the county to participate in that, and we're looking to finalize that and bring that back to council here next month. We'll also, at the same time, bring a cost recovery and reimbursement agreement. So the council's familiar with that. And then we'll start all the kickoff meetings that are needed for this with all the affected stakeholders. So we'll be meeting with other agencies such as Caltrans and Air Districts and so forth, but we'll also be working with the property owners to get their feedback on land use and those types of things, as well as the county and LAFCO. And I pointed out in the staff report that the county has shared with us some of their preliminary concerns that we need to address, and we're fully aware of those. And we're looking forward to meeting with them and all the other affected stakeholders so that we can make sure that we address all these issues and bring back a quality project for the city council and the other agencies to improve. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Aaron.
We have a public hearing.
Yeah.
I'll wait till after the public hearing.
We do have John Teague, who wishes to speak on this item. John, if you can go to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is John Teague. I'm a property owner. I was involved in the sphere of influence, the undertaking that Aaron was talking about. In the sphere of influence, we were asked... I'll lose my notes here, going everywhere. Excuse me. The sphere of influence, I think the general consent of everybody there was that they didn't want the city to move in. I myself, I'm neutral. I said that at the meeting. But one thing did come out at the meeting was that there was a lot of questions. A lot of questions about what are the costs, what are the impacts? City water, city sewer, what are the costs? Road widening, curb gutter, those types of things. Police, fire, other issues, people were concerned about the cost. We'd asked about those, we didn't get any response. We got told that we would get answers to those later. So I got a follow-up email. I chose not to vote, by the way, in this participation because I said, I don't have enough information to base a decision. I said, I need some information before I can give a good decision. So I didn't get that information. So I got a follow-up email about a few weeks later. And again, I expressed my concerns in my email. And I said, tell us what the costs are gonna be. Tell us what the impacts are gonna be. I said, that never happened. And I was sent a follow-up email, and I was told that from Smira here, is one of the consultants, said that she would respond back to me in a week and after she talked to the city. That never happened. So I decided, well, I get another email or letter, and within that, it says there's gonna be a council meeting tonight to talk about the vote. And I think one thing that's interesting in this vote was, if you look at the original vote, the original vote was not so much for this. So they moved the county line, or the sphere of influence line, so that it was more positive. But, okay. So I decided to come to the meeting tonight to find out the rest of the story. And in preparing for this meeting tonight, I happened to check my Get Online City Council, looked at the agenda, and I read the report that the council apparently has. And it's the attachment for, you know, number nine. And it's from Aaron Bush. And in the report, it says that at the August 11th meeting, which I attended, it says the levels of servicing costs were discussed at the meeting. They were discussed, but they were never answered. It says the proposed Newcombe Ranch project overview was discussed. And I thought, well, what's the proposed Newcombe Ranch project? That was never discussed. I went across the street, I talked to my neighbor in the morning. I said, because she was there, I said, do you remember anything about the Newcombe Ranch? No. Nothing about the Newcombe Ranch. So I read further, and I'm trying to find out, well, what's going on with the Newcombe Ranch deal? And I find out that it's 160 acre development or more houses right next door to mine. And, you know, I'm still neutral on that. But what I don't think is right is that information was never brought to the people in the sphere of influence. It was never brought to the table to discuss. And to this day, I don't even know what's gonna be right next door across the street from me. Government is supposed to be about transparency. This isn't transparent at all. And so I would suggest that answer the people's questions. Go back, read the records, give them responses. give them responses, give them at least an estimate about the cost, and be very forthcoming about what is the proposed Newcombe Ranch development project of a hundred and sixty acres that all these people are living right next to? What is it? Be transparent. That's what I'm asking.
Thank you, John. Aaron, I think that you want to, I mean, I definitely don't wanna, you know, have this into a two-way discussion, but I think John does bring up some great points. One of the things that we, obviously, from the government standpoint of view, is definitely be transparent. And I think hearing back, some of the feedback from some of the people that were there, that a lot of the questions were not answered. And we'll get back to you, we'll get back to you. And I think originally when we went out to take a look at that, we also looked at, just trying to see, okay, if at one point in time, we wanna look at the expansion of the city, let's take a look at going possibly down to Berry Road and not having it up at, you know, at the Stewart Road area. And I think that's why I came back to the Stewart Road. I think the people below Stewart Road didn't want anything to do with possibility of annexation at one point in time with the city. Most of the property owners at that point wanted to do. But I think, as John is a property owner as well, and he brings up some very valid points, is, you know, his questions along with others probably needs to be answered as well, is what is the cost? And were those questions answered at any point in time after the meeting at all?
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those are valid questions, and we did say so at the outreach meeting as well. The challenge is, as we shared at that meeting, is we don't know the final cost. We have ballparks of what an average single-family home connecting to water and service, water and sewer services would be. But as far as what those costs would be when you actually start getting into project by project, we haven't even started with the project yet. And so, I totally respect the idea of sharing that information, but I don't have it until we start these studies. And that's something that we tried to convey at that outreach meeting, that until we start planning for what this area will look like, we don't know those numbers, because it's gonna vary based on a case-by-case project, what kind of infrastructure is necessary to get there. Where's it coming from? How big is it gonna be, et cetera? So, we don't, we won't have that until we get into this process. As far as the comments about the Newcombe Ranch project, we did talk about, again, in generalities, because all we're talking about right now is just the opportunity to go talk and go through the process of expanding the possible sphere of influence line. No policy decisions, no formal action, no official action is being taken. This is simply to start an application process that is gonna have many, many public meetings, many outreach efforts to process this application. The Newcombe Ranch project, as I pointed out earlier, was submitted as this property here. That's as much as I know about it. It's mixed juice, residential and commercial. We haven't gotten anywhere near the details of what it's gonna be next, in terms of how many homes, the density. Again, we're working with the county general plan land use designation right now, which is shown here. So, you have low-density residential, you have ranchettes, and you have Ag twenty land use designation. So, we're starting brand-new fresh on this as we go forward. And all throughout this process, we'll be reaching out to all the property owners and all the affected agencies to talk about what is happening with this project. We'll be identifying infrastructure and associated costs with that. And so then, along appropriate points of that process, we'll be bringing that back to council and giving you opportunities to direct us yea or nay and have public input as to whether or not that's appropriate there, or what is the cost and those kinds of factors. So, I appreciate the comments about wanting to know answers. I do too. And we wanna give those to folks, but we wanna give them the right answers after we do the studies.
Do them, Mayor.
Yes.
Aaron, I think, I was at that meeting down at Berry School. And I think some of the frustration that the property owners had was, again, was about the cost. And I think we need to make it clear is, first of all, the county has adopted this sphere of influence. This is not something that the city went out and said, "We want to expand our city to this." This was in the county's general plan when they updated it recently. But secondly is that if this was adopted as a sphere of influence, correct me if I'm wrong here, this would not affect the current property owners one bit as far as increase in taxes or anything like that. This only would affect new development, and new development would be paying these costs that we're talking about for sewer and water and that type of thing. And existing property owners wouldn't have to hook up to that if they didn't want to. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I went back to this picture here real quick. Again, the green line represents our existing sphere of influence. The red line represents the city limits. So, right now, property owners over here are within our sphere, but they're not within our city limits.
Right.
And so, they're Sutter County residents. They're not UBA city residents. And so, all of the costs and everything associated that they're dealing with is county. What we're talking about doing tonight is exploring the possibility of expanding this green line down to here. It doesn't mean that they're in the city. It doesn't mean that development's happening next year or not. What has to happen is a whole bunch of studies, as I said. And then, the next step, much like over here, is you would have to go through the annexation process. And that's when certainly the property owners have a direct vote and cause and effect in whether or not they're annexed into the city limits. And so, once we start getting to that level of talking about annexation, then of course we'll have those costs, you know, hard cost figures for what is gonna be, you know, by a case-by-case basis.
Well, and I think that was the biggest concern, is that this is something that this action would cost them money. And the reality is that this action won't cost them anything at this point. And even in the future, they have, there's gonna be plenty of opportunity to make those choices. As you mentioned, if this was adopted to expand the sphere of influence tonight, that's all it does. It doesn't annex these properties into the city. That's a totally separate process.
It actually doesn't even expand the sphere tonight. All it simply does is gives us direction so that as we go out and start exploring the technical studies, we have, because as part of this effort, we have to go report to LAFCO. And LAFCO's gonna require what's called a municipal services review, which basically says, wherever your boundary line is, you're able to serve. Makes sense. They wanna make sure that you can adequately serve your sphere. And so, we need to have some kind of line so that everybody knows where we're serving. And so, all we're doing tonight is saying, as part of your process, we're recommending that the line be drawn here. And there was no, there was no playing with the results here. What, this happened that evening, and then also based on the response from the surveys that were mailed out. And so, you can see that the majority, the overwhelming majority of those who did not favor an expansion to the sphere were south of Stewart. And so, realistically, as you look at, you know, a variety of different things, you look at the county's general plan land use, it's primarily Ag down here. And then you also get into other factors about of environmental concerns and those kinds of things. Stewart represents a logical boundary line for studying. Again, it's not, it's not happening tonight. We're studying it.
Can you go back to the current city boundaries and the sphere of influence, this one? Along the right side there, along the Feather River, there's a portion that is county. Is it possible to, I see the sphere of influence, I guess that it goes out to the center of the river. Is that correct currently?
Correct.
All right, so maybe this is premature, but I would think that at some point in the future, if we're looking at annex those, that we look at adding that property because of some of the issues that it creates for law enforcement with the migrants and homeless people that live down in the river bottoms. Currently, that is policed by the county. It makes it awkward for doing that, and then going up even to the Sutter County Airport, which is still in the county. But that has been handed over to a private group. So, if we're looking at that, I would like to include those areas in this study too, if that's possible.
Well, because these areas are already in our sphere, they're already addressed by our current municipal service review, which we have to do every five years. So, what the next logical step for that area over here that you're referencing, as well as all these other areas that we've identified as future master plans or specific plans, for example, like the Lincoln East over here, the thought process there with our twelve growth policies is that as these plans are ready to develop, they'll come in and do their own individual annexations. And that way, we're ensuring that we're not jeopardizing the vote for that particular plan area with another plan area. So, we can certainly, if it's the council's desire, explore doing this area, but it would be my recommendation that we do that individually and separate from this because of all the different issues and the municipal services review that is needed for that area south of Bow.
All right. Okay. That's all I have at this point. Any other questions for Mr. Bush?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was just gonna offer, if it's a desire of the council, Mr. Teague.
It is?
Teague, Mr. Teague, you know, he raised points. I don't know to the degree we can answer those, but he does provide us the opportunity to sit down with someone, and maybe Mr. Bush and I can take some time of his, if he has time available in the next week or two, to better understand what his issues are. So, as we continue the process in the future, we can, to Councilman Dukes's point, better refine a product to put out and answer the questions of the public, so.
Is it okay with you, Mr. Teague?
But I would also like to have that, that council thing. And I think that would play a lot of, but I agree with you. Didn't laugh, just gone green. I, for one, didn't vote. I did vote because, like I said at the meeting, it was, I chose not to vote. Three or four letters sent to me. At no point was this development ever mentioned. And he says, "Well, there's no details of the development." I could think of, this is January letter, that is, "We're gonna try development, and it says, within one month, we're gonna give you a master plan." I'd like to know what's going on there.
Right.
I think everybody else in that area would like to know that too. And what I'm saying is, I don't think anybody knows. I haven't talked to my neighbors since this morning. They didn't know.
Right.
I think that includes this, uh-oh.
The, I, it's been there. Having been on a planning commission and charity for several years, it's a long, slow process to get to the point where they have some hard numbers and can give you some actual concrete things that where there can be a vote. There's not gonna be any vote until at such time as the annexation, at such time as they move farther on. So, we're still, we're in the process of developing all this at this point, and it's gonna take some time. So, there are no specifics necessarily, other than what Newcombe Ranch is planning as far as the retail or housing or whatever. But I think that would be an excellent point for you to get together with Steve and Aaron to go over some details there. And you might be able to help us disseminate that information to the other people who are concerned. As the process goes on, it'll be more meetings too, so. And I think, I think like Aaron said, this is just the beginning step of it, and it doesn't, it just begins the studies and fact-finding and all that good stuff. I don't think anything's defined yet, what's going in as far as commercial, how many houses, what density housing's going in. So, this is just the first step of many, many steps to come. So, with that, if there's not any other questions from the council, it was a pleasure.
I would move the recommendation to proceed with the next steps.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Starkey. It's second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bush. Next up is business from city council. City council reports. Councilmember Buckland.
Had the pleasure of viewing the release of the UBA Sutter Chamber of Commerce, UBA Sutter video just about a week ago right here in this very room. It has been released on some different channels on national television, so we're getting national exposure. It's about a ten-minute video that's on different, or on this program that's out there. But it was a great opportunity, if you haven't obtained, go to the Chamber website, and you'll be able to see the, that video itself. Also attended the animal services volunteer dinner. Have a number of volunteers that work at animal services. A number of positive things are coming out of our, out of that new facility, and that's a reduction in euthanasia. Adoptions are up, and it's a real positive facility, and what's going on there is very positive. In today's paper, a gentleman that's working on becoming a dog trainer actually volunteers time over there and trains dogs that are less likely to be adopted into some type of friendly, fun-providing dog that can be more adoptable for future families. And so, he's enjoying that and learning quite a bit from it. So, there's just so many things going on, and I don't know exactly how many volunteers we have, but the dinner probably had about thirty-five individuals at it. Also attended the SECOG Board of Directors meeting. The exciting saga of talking about our high-speed rail system in Southern California. As many people call it, the crazy train or the train of nowhere. There are three different joint powers of authority that are trying to all tie together, and that would be high-speed rail, the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority, and Capitol Corridor Joint Power to provide rail service into that in the future. So, if you think that high-speed rail is going to be the bottom of the costs, everyone is looking at trying to expand to meet the needs of serving that rail line. So, pay attention down in Sacramento, and I'll try to keep you up to date as that project heads forward. I didn't attend the hands project. I know others did. I have to admit, I had come down with the flu, so I felt it appropriate to do my hands-on project, a fishing pole out in the middle of the Feather River. So, I did miss it, but I didn't spread any of my illness to the other volunteers that were out there.
That bunch of sick fish out there now. Councilmember Ramon.
I know that some of the council people are excited for the Giants game ready to go, so I'll make it real.
I'll make it real brief. Had the UBA Sutter Transit Authority meeting. We're working to put surveillance video cameras and trying to work with Caltrans. It's been an issue, trying to work through that. But we're moving forward. Hopefully, we can get some surveillance cameras, because we've had vandalism with the people that park their car and leave them there for the rest of the day while they go to work. Other than that, just some communities, gatherings, meetings, that's about it.
Just to say a little bit more about the regional transit authority. They've installed security cameras in two locations at the Park and Rides in UBA County. And since they've done that, the vandalism has gone to zero. We're trying to work with Caltrans to put cameras on their poles at the Bow Road Park and Ride. But for some reason, Caltrans is not wanting us to put cameras there. So, it's going through a long and long process, and Caltrans is royal pain in the hindquarters.
Our camera was too heavy for the pole.
Yeah, there's a lot of, anyway, whatever we can do over the next several months to help speed that along would be very helpful, I think, to the people who use those locations, so hopefully we can get that done.
Great. Vice Mayor Dukes. All right. Attended the Mosquito Vector meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the, we're winding down in the mosquito West Nile virus season. Again, this was not a good season for this area. We had a lot of cases of West Nile and human cases, and a lot of people say, "Well, we had a drought. There wasn't as much water, it should be less," but they actually congregate more and populate more in the water that is less. So, it certainly is something that I know of one resident who spent thirty days in the hospital because of getting West Nile, and she's home now, but she's paralyzed, and she's in her mid-forties. And so, it's, it is very serious, and it's something that we need to keep in mind when we go out in the evenings that we wear repellent and so on. Attended the Sutter Beats Flood Control Agency meeting. We are wrapping up the construction for this year and should be rebuilding the levee prism that has been degraded to put the slurry walls in for a nineteen-mile section, which is, we were able to get the area done this year that we had hoped to. The Corps has allowed the construction- The core is allowed, the construction season normally ends November first because of weather. But because of the drought and the low reservoirs, they have allowed us to continue on into about the middle of December so that we can finish getting things wrapped up before the flood season. And hopefully, we'll get lots of rain this year. That would be a great problem to have. But so that has helped us. And then, let's see here, had the, attended the Teen Challenge banquet last week, which is a great organization that helps people with addictions and life-controlling issues. They have over two hundred facilities here in the US and over a thousand worldwide. And they do a great job of helping people with addictions. In fact, the, the, most of the secular type of drug rehab facilities have a success rate of about twenty-four percent. Theirs is eighty-four percent, which is a fantastic record that they have in getting people's lives turned around. Attended the Air Force Ball out at Beale on Saturday evening. It was a large event this year. It was the largest that they've had. There were seven hundred and fifty airmen and people from the community attending that. And before, they've had it at different locations that restricted how many could come. And they, so they opened up one of the big hangars and decorated it, and we had a great turnout for that. Last Wednesday night, graduated from the FBI Citizens Academy and was able to come home with a nice certificate for that. And on the gun range, I was given the award of go ahead, make my day certificate. So had a good time with that. And then we've got a video here for the Hands Project that we did on Saturday. This is part of, they wanted a garage taken down, so we decided to take it down. You did miss it, yeah. But Brad McIntyre, myself, and Jason Reiner, and another gentleman, we decided to push the garage over, get rid of it. So then we loaded that up into a big dumpster and got rid of that. So I, this is the fourth year that I've been able to participate in that program. And as the gentleman said earlier, it is really good to be able to, as elected officials, to go out and help participate in this community event each year. This was the fifth annual program. I missed one program because I was in Japan that year. But I've participated all the other four years. And it is very nice to go out and help people and clean up the neighborhoods in our community. And with that, that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. There's a lot of great meetings that I think all of us attend. A lot of good stuff coming up. First and foremost, on Friday evening is the Mayor's Cup. I encourage everybody to come out and attend. It's always nice to see Uba City High School versus River Valley in a friendly match. Friendly from our standpoint of view, but competitive from your standpoint of view. So that's always a nice match there. We do have a meeting coming up this Friday. You'll get a chance to meet with the new deputy district supervisor for Caltrans. So a few of us will get a chance to go and visit with him. Seek Parade is coming up, first weekend in November. So that'll be next Friday, Saturday, and Sunday with fireworks on Friday and the main parade on the following Sunday. So a lot of good things happening. And with that, I have nothing else, and have a great evening. Score five-zero. Thank you.